Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the June 11th, 2024 City Council Study Session. So it's glad to see a lot of interested folks here. This is an interesting topic that we have today. So we'll start off with your role.
Mayor Good. Mayor Potem Cantelmi?
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth?
Here.
Councilman Gambogi?
I'm here.
Councilman Montoya?
I too am here.
Councilmember Rusing?
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilwoman Moore is excused from the meeting.
City Clerk, do you want to read the agenda item description?
I can, Mayor. We'll have a presentation and discussion regarding the Airport Vicinity Overlay District Draft and possible timing for future adoption.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm George Whirling. I'm the Planning Manager for the city. I'm going to give you a brief history introduction to the AVO process and where we ended up at our Planning Commission. There's some relatively new information that I may defer to the city attorney to talk about in regards to the applicability of the AVO. To begin with, the map in front of you shows the AVO area. It's the boundary that actually matches up with a boundary that the city adopted years and years ago called the Airport Influence Area. That area requires navigation easements of all property owners within it. We use the same boundary for consistency's sake in creating the AVO. The AVO itself is an overlay district that's intended to put additional requirements or restrictions on land uses or types of land uses within the boundary of the AVO in an effort to protect those land uses from impacts created by the airport and to protect the airport from impacts created by the development. So we know of certain types of uses that are noise or impact sensitive, impact being impact zones that are created through FAA guidelines to address the fact that certain parts of the areas around airports are where more planes crash than other areas. Most plane crashes occur within the airport grounds themselves. Second after that, third after that, et cetera, are numbered zones one, two, three, and four. Five and six are either a much larger area or an area confined within the airport grounds themselves or adjacent to the runway. We looked at the uses that occur in those areas and determined that certain uses should be restricted to outside of certain zoning or certain impact zones and outside of certain noise contours. Those uses that we found were most sensitive to the potential for a plane crash were also those that are most sensitive to noise overflights and the generation of complaints to the airport about the noise associated with those overflights. So one of the things that we looked at initially was what's the zoning within the area? Which areas need to be looked at more seriously because residential uses tend to be one of those uses that have a higher generation of complaints to the airport about noise? And then areas such as Deepwell Ranch, which have an unusual master plan that layers uses one on top of the other, where we don't necessarily know in advance what use will be selected for an area and therefore we treat them as if they're going to be one of the areas that are residential and have potential for creating more complaints to the airport, therefore we treat them that way. In creating the district, we held a series of meetings. Airport staff, planning staff, held a series of meetings with the public, and then we held a series of meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We held six meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission as public hearings taking comment from numerous residents of the area, developers who own property in the area. It was a very significant process that took the better part of a year to get through to a point where the Planning and Zoning Commission finally voted on a draft. The text of the draft, by the way, we gave you in the packet, so you have that text. That was the draft that was finalized by the Planning Commission. And I have a copy of it available for our IT staff to bring up if you need to talk about specific language, but primarily, I think today, we're talking about concepts and the In the course of those Planning and Zoning Commission hearings and review of the applicability of the AVO and various aspects of the AVO, we concluded some negotiations between council and the Deepwell Ranch area, which is the mint green on the map, to exclude them from the AVO's requirements. That was a recommendation that was then forwarded to the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission's final action excluded the Deepwell Ranch area from the AVO. That was done near the end of the process, near the end of the six meetings, not starting that way, but ultimately ending that way. We were also in negotiations, council again, negotiations with YRMC, now YRMC Dignity, for the area, the red box at the top north of the airport, that is a future hospital complex, primarily starting out as medical office uses and may eventually having a small hospital as a possibility. That area was not excluded from the AVO's requirements, but a concession was granted, offered by the airport director and adopted as part of the adoption of the map and the AVO draft that Planning Commission did December 8th of '22, I believe, was the action date. Moving one of the noise contours to the south of the property in order to give them enough room to have a residential component, which they had planned in their master plan, room to move to the north and therefore still be able to provide residential uses for their doctors, nurses, et cetera, but keeping them outside of one of the noise impact zones that would generate noise complaints and keeping them out of an area that potentially would have an impact from aircraft overflight. So that was an offer that was made at the very last meeting that the Planning Commission acted on.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question. You said there was a concession, and it was accepted and all that, but you didn't explain on the map what was that concession?
So within that red box where the hospital property is, you'll notice that the black line that represents the 60 noise contour would cut across the property, taking most of it in. We actually moved that line down to a different 60 designation that just cuts across the southeast corner of the property, leaving most of the property out of that noise contour. That was something that was done as a concession, again, to let them shift around their uses slightly on the property, still having the residential component they'd planned for, but keeping it out of a noise contour that would restrict uses, specifically residential type.
So that's not only the current 60, it'll be the future 60 if the AVO goes into effect?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I should state that this was kind of a concession that was done, this not as part of an agreement. So the hospital parcel, they didn't agree to this. It was just something that the city did to acknowledge their future development.
It resulted from the negotiations that were underway, but there was no conclusion to those negotiations like there was with Deepwell. And the approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission specifically exempted Deepwell, but it adopted this map at the same time. So the recommendation is to use this map with that change in the noise contour.
Councilmember Rusing?
How far is the hospital property from the end of the crosswind runway? Is it like a mile?
It's about a mile, just under a mile.
And did they speak to you or the airport or anybody before they purchased this property as to the location at the end of the crosswind runway?
Not that I'm aware of. We were aware that they received the property in negotiations with James Deepwell Ranch, but we were not specifically consulted about its location. They did bring us a master plan later.
They didn't do their, you might just think that maybe they could have done more due diligence as far as locating this hospital so close to the runway and underneath the flight patterns of the air traffic. Thank you.
That's a very good point. One of the things that we also looked at were areas where we have had negotiations with the Arizona Eco Development on the east side of the airport. You'll notice a large green area to the northeast. That area was partially acquired by the city in its exchange of property with AED to preserve the Dells, but it also allowed us to have possession of and control of a piece of property that's in line with a future extension of the runway and therefore it could be protected. We also looked at the impacts of the noise contours on the areas that are not part of Deepwell Ranch. You'll notice a few oddities on the map. If you were to continue the noise contour lines, there's a little piece that runs along the front of Pinion Oaks. It's way down at the south of the map, adjacent to the property that fronts Pinion Oaks along Willow Creek Road. That area would be restricted to prevent residential uses because of the noise contour. That area is designated in our general plan for commercial. It's on one of the busiest roadways in town. It's certainly not a residential property. And there's a little notch within Deepwell Ranch that was previously agreed to. That area is actually identified in Deepwell Ranch in their master plan, designating as an area where no residential or schools would be built. And that area is identified, it's almost at the end of the runway, but within Deepwell Ranch. So that's one of the few areas that you will see that designation within Deepwell Ranch. And that's because their master plan already identified it. In the course of the six public hearings plus the prior public meetings that were held, we received a lot of input, both from the developers of nearby property as well as residents of the area that would be affected by this, a lot. Most of our meetings at the Planning Commission were full, maybe not every seat, but many of the seats in the chambers were full. We took comments at all six of those meetings. The chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission is here. He was chair at the time. There was an outpouring of information back to the commission, and the commission was wide open to taking that input, one of the best exchanges of information I've seen in the 23 years I've been here on a project. Taking all of those things into consideration, the Planning and Zoning Commission ultimately made a recommendation by a five to one vote to move the AVO in its text version that you have and the map that's attached to it, this map, on to City Council for action. At the time that was done, council was in negotiations with Deepwell Ranch, were still in negotiations with Deepwell Ranch, but they were deep in the negotiations. And we never forwarded the AVO into a meeting like this to talk about council action on it. So one of the purposes of today's discussion is to get council direction about what to do with the AVO, where to move it forward. Is it time or do we continue to wait while other things are going on? In the meantime, in reviewing it and discussing it with the city attorney's office, one of the things that came up was that much of the property in the area is covered by development agreements. And those development agreements often come with land use entitlements that go with them. In treating the Deepwell Ranch the way we did for exemption, those land use entitlements were a reason to exempt them. Of the other DAs that applied, I'm sorry, development agreements, DAs that applied to properties in the area, if I could get our IT support staff, put the other map up, please. Many of those DAs are older DAs, they've been in place for a long time, but they do entitle property under zoning regulations and zoning rules. So we have a situation that I'm sure the city attorney will talk a little bit more about, that many of the properties within, and I apologize for the very lightness, we were trying to get it darker and that's what we ended up with. Everything in the blue boundary is within the AVO, and everything that is pink has a development agreement with some form of land use entitlements associated with it. Now, you have maps attached to your packet that hopefully are a little better to read than what we have up on the screen, but as you can see, much of the area within the AVO boundaries are covered by DAs that may exempt them from application of much, if not all, of the AVO's criteria or requirements. And again, I'm sure the city attorney will talk a little more about that. One of the concerns that jumped out at us when we looked at this map is that many of the subdivisions or developments that aren't covered by DAs are substantially constructed already. Pinion Oaks is off to the southwest side of the map. That area is 95% developed. The very northern end of it has a number of vacant lots, but it's substantially developed already. There are a couple of subdivisions, Antelope Hills Development in the immediate vicinity of the airport subdivision that was originally actually created by the city of Prescott way back in the 70s. That area is down to about five vacant lots over the whole subdivision. So there's a lot of areas that are, that would be subject to the AVO that really aren't going to have much impact on protecting the airport. So I think that's a major part of the discussion today is to find out what your perception is about that, what your direction is about handling the applicability of the AVO and giving direction to staff with that in mind. What do we do with the AVO at this point and how much of it is and should be applicable? And I'll turn it over to the city attorney if he has comments.
Thank you, Mayor. George, I have a question, and I'm just kind of looking at this visually right now. Could you give me a concept of what percentage of the land inside the blue box is not pink? Or whatever color that is, I guess? To me, it looks like maybe...
It's about 50/50, maybe 55% not covered.
Okay. And then, I mean, because some of that that isn't pink right now, if I'm looking at, some of that in the middle, that's the actual airport, right?
Correct. The airport itself is the white area in the very middle, and you'll notice that much of it is outside the current corporate limits, but our planning boundary goes beyond. So the AVO would apply to that area if properties annex into the city that are currently outside the city.
Which I guess leads me to a question I was going to ask, which was about that, and this may be a Joe question, not a George question, but are they under, if they're in the county, is the AVO anything more than a suggestion if they're not within our municipal bounds?
No, it's nothing more than a suggestion, except it may come into the municipal boundaries at some point, and it at least establishes those protections for when it's brought in.
Okay, thank you.
And that's one of the important parts of it is establishing land uses outside the city sometimes gives us a protection for future annexations. Several of those large white areas are, the rectangular areas specifically, are state trust lands, and those areas are constantly being pushed by the state for developers to acquire, and annexing them into the city would be a benefit to the state land department, whose job is to maximize the value of state land.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. You've made the point that this AVO does not apply to the pink areas that already have development agreements. Now, the AVO is more than zoning. It's fair disclosure for, and releases for noise. So are you telling me that the pink areas, which have very weak disclosure and releases, practically non-existent, that this AVO won't be able to change that? Because that's been one of the major problems. People have been buying in these developments and don't realize the amount of overflight that they're going to be experiencing.
And I think that's part of the reason for the discussion today is to address that. By not applying land use restrictions because there were land use entitlements as part of the DA, how much of the rest of the AVO should be applicable? I think this city attorney is leaning in to answer that question perhaps.
Yeah, and just to kind of address that, there are multiple issues. There's the land use, that's the main kind of analysis you do as you look at this. But then there's the question of both disclosures, the navigation easement, and so forth. And it's really a layered approach. To the positive side of things, all of the development agreements do have agreements on navigation easements for residential land, which is a good thing. And the requirement for navigation easements predate most of, or some of the development agreements as well. But having said that, the exemption on some of the disclosure issues applies equally as it does to zoning issues as well.
Mayor Potem Cantelmi?
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably a question for George and our city attorney. So I'd like to actually hear from both of you. What are the downside? What are the negatives? What would be the reason for not passing this, considering what you mentioned earlier, George, about we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know what's going to go into the rest of those areas there, and we don't know whether some of those areas won't be annexed in the future? So is there a downside? And if so, I'd like to know all of it.
I think from a planner perspective and a zoning perspective, there isn't very much of a downside to implementing the AVO to cover as much of the area as you can because not only do you have the potential for those areas that are not currently inside the city, the state trust lands for the most part, annexing in and then having this already predetermined that they will have to comply with it when they come in. But you also have the potential for some of the other areas to redevelop. Typically, the residential would not be areas that we would see any redevelopment in our lifetimes, but a lot of the commercial areas undergo a pretty regular turnover of uses that, under our zoning, the commercial zoning allows residential uses. Those areas, if they were to redevelop and have to go back through a process of reentitlement, then we may be able to apply the AVO during that reentitlement process with DA negotiations. From a general perspective of maybe just planning and not necessarily related to zoning, there's a question of fairness. I apply it to you, and across the street, I don't apply it to you. Again, because of the different circumstances with a DA in one place and no DA in the other. There's certainly a legal precedent to allow that because there are different circumstances legally between those properties, but the perception might be an unfairness.
I guess just to answer your question, what's the downside of doing an AVO? I think the downside is always you're impacting property rights. So you're weighing balances. This is what you're doing as council. Now, most of the land that's not in a DA that would be impacted by the AVO, most of them would be compliant already. A lot of it is industrial or commercial, which would be allowed, but it prohibits reuse in the future and stuff like that. So the impact on property rights is something to be considered and is always a negative, but that's to be weighed against the positive of protecting the area around the airport. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. But, you know, of course, just for the public, understanding that some of these restrictions were imposed upon us also through some of the agreements with the airport. So we can't control all that, although I am a big proponent of property rights, but it's basically just placing some restrictions on those properties in order to accommodate a bigger cause, which would be the airport protection.
Right. And kind of on that note, as to other agreements that you're referencing, we do, all of the grant agreements, we make a grant assurance that we will do whatever we can reasonably to ensure compatible land use around the airport. And this is an effort, in that sense, to ensure compatible uses, not just now, but in the future.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing?
I support moving ahead with the AVO. I mean, it's better to be late than never. It's not going to be perfect, but, you know, looking at your map, there's massive amounts of undeveloped Arizona State Land Department that's probably going to be bought by developers and developed. And it's right in our growth corridor. So I think we should go ahead and work on the language in this draft, and I completely And I completely support getting this AVO put in place as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. So I did have a question regarding the existing subdivisions, kind of like Pinion Oaks, Antelope Hills, that are not covered by a DA. And from what I'm seeing in the documentation here is, let's see, on page eight of the document, section B, fair notice disclosure, that each owner of a property located within the AVO shall make fair disclosure to each purchaser or renter, and so on. Proposed developments, CCNRs, shall include the disclosure in the CCNRs to be recorded with the subdivision. So we are making all of the current residents have some impact if and when they go to sell their property, and probably are affecting all of the HOAs to have to do some legal work and renewal the minute we would put this into effect. Am I interpreting this correctly?
I believe you're correct. Most of the impacts that will happen are going to be the fair notice, the disclosures, and then some limitations that would apply to, for instance, vegetative growth and things like that on those properties, if they happen to be within an area that's sensitive to aircraft overflight.
So I have a question, where we have all this property that's pink and already covered by a DA and therefore exempt. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Alda.
Why would we not exempt all of the different current residents who came into condition and they have private property rights? Why would they not also be included in being exempt while we're in the process of really focusing on the really, really white sections of this map for an AVO?
To answer a question in the most basic way possible, we are really limited when there's a development agreement, and we have to make them exempt. And we don't have to when there's other houses. Now, a little bit more complete answer. Where there's pre-existing uses, like a house, for example, that would be brought into an area under the AVO where houses are not allowed, they can still continue being a house under one of two different theories. One is a non-conforming use, meaning they stay as a house, they're able to be used as a house, but they can't expand it all. You couldn't add an addition to your house. That's in the non-conforming use stage. The other is a theory that we discussed called the pre-existing use, which just allows it to continue forward under the zoning as it was previously approved. So they could do additions and so forth. And so for, if the council chose to treat it as a pre-existing use rather than a non-conforming use, they wouldn't see differences in their ability to use their property, but they would then acquire the obligation to do the disclosures. And the disclosures being just a benefit for potential buyers and information, more than a restriction on their use.
And just for a little additional information, the version that was recommended out of Planning Commission to you includes the pre-existing use rather than the non-conforming use concept. So we're not making anyone non-conforming who's already there with a legal use by adoption of the AVO. They would just be designated as pre-existing.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess, kind of going back to what Lois initially drove out there was, is that this would have the impact of someone who already has a home within this, like this AVO district, of having to disclose that they're in an AVO district when they go to sell their house.
Correct.
And I guess my thought on that, or a question I have, is, is there a possibility that then we're having a negative adverse impact to their property value if that happens?
I can't say that it won't have any impact. I don't, I don't know for certain.
And that was, I mean, I don't expect you to know that answer, because that's, I don't have a crystal ball either, so nobody knows what's going to happen with property values. But I guess, kind of thinking this through, I guess I worry about, you know, I do think it's important to do something, but I also am nervous about opening the city up to liability in that context. And I guess that's what I worry about. And I've talked, I have a client who sold his house in Deepwell Ranch because he was worried about the AVO passing, and he moved to Indiana. So like, there are people who are thinking about this in these communities, and it is going to impact them. And even when this was at planning and zoning, I was getting emails from people who lived in these communities, who were saying, you know, "I'm really worried about you diminishing the value of my home." Whether that's true or not, people make those arguments a lot, and is it true or not? By the way, my client was able to sell his house for a profit, so I think he did okay. But I just worry about that, because that, then we get into a situation where we're engaging in a taking, or, you know, a diminishment of someone's property value, and that leaves us with liability. And I guess that's a consequence. Every time I'm up here and we're talking about things like this, I always kind of want to examine what are unintended consequences that we don't foresee, because I think too many people who've sat up here before kind of didn't do that kind of thinking, and that's how we get to where we are now sometimes.
And if I could address that, I think it's part of what you need to discuss, and council needs to consider, is that it'll have some impacts on people. My counterargument to that is, the areas within development agreements already have disclosure requirements. And this kind of brings these other houses in line, so that it increases the amount of people who are receiving disclosures, rather than adding only on to some people. The other thing is, there already is disclosure requirements under state law if you're around an airport. Now, it's very, it basically says you're near an airport.
Right. And I guess if that's, so just to counter your counterargument there for a second, though, if that's the case, then what is the value of doing this, then?
It increases, it kind of beefs up the disclosures that are required, to give people a better, potential buyers a better understanding of what they're coming into.
And then I think that the argument that we're not diminishing their property value comes back into being salient, and I think that's a concern. And it's just one I have. I mean, I may be the only person up here who fills out, who's worried about that concern, but I just, I think we have to be careful, because, you know, we don't have an endless amount of money to write checks to people if we diminish their property value.
One last item on that. Like I said, I'm not trying to diminish that concern. I think that is part of what council needs to make a decision on. But related aspect is that of liability. We do have an opinion, it was prior to my arrival, but an opinion from Snell and Wilmer that states that, as it relates to Prop 207, and that's the Arizona property rights proposition that requires compensation for reduction in value, that there is an exception for both public and health, health and public safety, traffic and transportation control, and that these types of requirements would fall under the exemption of Prop 207. So, but that doesn't, that doesn't kind of squash the debate that you must have about whether this, the impacts that property owners will have.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I would just like to add, you touched upon it a little bit, that the state of Arizona has a, every real estate transaction, there's something called a spuds report, I forget what the, what it stands for, where you have to disclose noxious, anything that is going to affect your property, you know, like, you know, landfill next door or something. And one of the specific questions is, is it located near an airport? It definitely asks about an airport. And then going on to Prop 207, I would just like to remind everyone that in order to get annexed into the city and to proceed with a development agreement, that the developer very happily waives his rights to Proposition 207 and signs a document where he suspends Prop 207, if I'm not mistaken, I've seen it.
That's included in most of our development agreements, correct?
I think what we're looking for is direction to move it forward, make modifications, agendize it for you to discuss it further. We're looking for your direction as to disposition of the AVO in its current form.
Mayor Protam, can you tell me?
You know, George, we spent a lot of years talking about this, and because we don't have a crystal ball, and we don't know what some of the people in these developments will do in the future, long after we're all gone. As Joe alluded to, there could be redevelopment, there can be adding on. I think it's a form of, a way for the city to control what goes in, in those areas, so long as that airport is functioning. I think we should go through with that. It gives us just another layer of protection and diminishes our liability for not doing what we need to be doing. You know, heaven forbid there ever is a terrible accident out there. I'd like to make sure that we have everything in place to make sure that we don't spread our liability so thin that we, you know, it's going to come back to bite us. So I think we have a duty to do everything we can do in terms of protecting the airport, but also protecting the people that live in those areas. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
I'd like to add that we need to support the airport, and one way to support the airport is to pass an AVO. So I think that's important, that we proceed. And so personally, I would like to continue on this path and get an AVO passed. Thank you.
Well, I will say that I've been monitoring this general disclosure concern for quite a number of years. I've looked at actual closing documents with people that purchased in the Deepwell Ranch area, with people that purchased in Granite Dells Estates, people that are currently residing around the old airport development. And I find frequently that new buyers simply don't get clear, transparent disclosure. I've seen tiny little squares on one sheet of a closing set of documents that unless you're really diligent, you wouldn't even recognize that. I've seen other references to disclosure documents or CCNRs based upon a link that's included in the closing documents, and find out that the link is broken, and the people can't find out what the CCNR requirements are until after they've closed escrow. So we've seen the consequences of that with people buying in these areas, and then finding out that there's significant air traffic consequences to their quiet enjoyment of their properties, and they feel that they've been misled. So I think the more that we can do to make sure that these disclosures are properly made, and that we don't have to worry about someone buying in those areas and then finding out, boy, if I knew this in advance, I wouldn't have bought here. Or I'm going to do my best to try to engage in some legal action because I wasn't fully informed. I think this gives us, when you balance the potential for a minor concern about property rights taking with the clear disclosure that makes it much more likely that the buyer understands where they're living and what the impacts of that are, I think the balance is far on the side of advancing and putting this airport vicinity overlay district into our land development code. So I strongly support it. If we have nothing else, or no other further comments, I'll ask for any public comments that we might consider.
No public comments, Mayor.
We will work with the legal department to figure out when and agendize this for your further discussion. Thank you.
I think you have a clear direction here.
Thank you.
Oh. Councilwoman Ferworth.
The only thing I would appreciate some more time on is, again, I wasn't aware until I opened the packet that this was coming. I did not get a chance to review the six hours of public comments and the meetings and all those other things. And I just also, because I, so I don't understand, because I wasn't part of it, like many of you were, I do not understand the level of the public concerns about this issue. And therefore, assuming worst case, I just worry about our picking and choosing and sequencing of battles when we need the public support on some really big things in the next few months. So that's, I'm going to lay it out there as a concern, if that affects the timing, that we consider bringing this forward.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments, no public comments, then you have your direction here, and I think we're now adjourned from this study session.